Wendy, Wendy. Perfect. All right, I will call the order, the regular city council meeting for February 16, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We'll now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Which it stands.
We can do that while we're doing this. All right, and we will now move into roll call, please.
Councilmember Kaisler?
He is absent.
All right, Councilmember Deutsch? Councilmember Bryan? Councilmember Clarno?
Pending. I'll resume.
Mayor Lucchese?
I'm here, thank you.
Now, we have some checks we're moving through. All right, thank you. We will now move into our special presentations and announcements. We have Allison Lyshevsky here to discuss and present the AARP grant funding opportunities.
Hi, everyone.
Can the Zoom participants confirm they can see the slideshow on the screen?
I can see it, yes.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Allison Lyshevsky, and I'm happy to be here tonight presenting an AARP Community Challenge Grant. Thank you, Dustin, for all your communication and collaboration with us so far to this point. So, this grant is a grant that I'd like to write to for, for some small community projects here in Dunsmere, and I'd like to do it through two separate entities. Next slide. So, these are the types of organizations that you can, that qualify for the AARP Community Grant, 501(c)(3), 501(c)(4), 501(c)(6) and government entities. Next slide, please. So, projects can include all sorts of different things. They're usually funded for a little under $20,000 or so. So, a lot of projects that have been funded in the past are things like creating vibrant public places, deliver a range of transportation and mobility options, and I believe, Bruce, you were interested in some things like this for our town as well, supporting housing options, which I know we're all interested in, ensure a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, certainly a passion of mine, increase digital connections, support community resilience, increase civic engagement, and improve community health and economic empowerment. Of course, being an AARP grant, there's an emphasis on folks 50 and above for all of these things. Next slide, please. So, you know, the grants, there's about, don't quote me on my numbers, I want to say 3,300 applicants, and they're only going to choose 400. You can go to the website if that's, you know, not too sure about those numbers. So, the chances are slim, but I'd like to take a stab at it anyways. And regardless of outcome, I'd like somehow for the two projects I'm about to present be funded somehow, and I'd like community support. So, the impact, and this is literally a copy and paste from the AARP Community Grant website, out of 100 total points, the project addresses a clear need that brings positive change and demonstrates the ability to overcome barriers, accelerate, grow, and/or sustain community efforts to become more livable for residents. Again, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna see the especially folks 50 and up. Execution, applicants demonstrate the capacity to deliver the AARP Community Challenge Project on time and within the awarded budget. I do have some grant writing experience with things like that. And then innovation, the project demonstrates creativity or unique design or engagement elements that contribute to impact on residents. Next slide, please. So, this is from the 2010 and 2020 census for Dunsmere, and, you know, data can be interpreted in all sorts of ways. You know, you can see that our community has increased. Folks are, the age of folks from 60 to 75 has increased from the years 2010 to 2020. Next one, please.
I think I missed.
You missed one slide. Right. And then you'll see also people in our community that are age 55 plus, there's a significant more amount, and there's more data that I'm going to be receiving on this for the grant writing purposes, but there is a disproportional amount of folks 50 and above in this town in comparison to other towns throughout the county. Which also, you know, because it fits into the AARP grant, this is going to be part of the grant writing process, hopefully. Next slide, please. So, the deadline for this is March 15th. That's me in my business skirt with my suit on there, writing grants. Thank you very much. And I'd like to do this this week, hopefully, for a draft for both of the grants that I'm going to present. So, the first one, and I'm going to go over this briefly because it doesn't necessarily involve the city of Dunsmere, but I think I'd like folks to know that this is coming down the pipeline. The first grant is going to be through the Dunsmere Rotary. It's a 501(c)(4), and their board already approved this grant writing process. So, you know that we have holiday decorations in town, and they're not in good shape. These were up here for a long time. Actually, this woman here is a friend of mine, Shana Mar. She did this in the 4th grade. We're the same age, I'm 41. So, so those have been up there since I was in the 4th grade. Anyways, that being said, I know that these look familiar to a lot of people in the room. When I took them down, I took all of the plywood off, it's in storage, because, next slide. Oh, wait, hold on, go back one second. The frames need welding, they need a rust-proof coating. It's my understanding that when I was in the 4th grade, somebody in town welded these, and now they're not in good shape, but they can be restored. All the lights are broken, so those have to be taken off. There's like glass in all the wreaths and things like that, and they're currently stored in the Rotary Shed. And then as far as the hardware that attaches them to the lamppost, it's all bent and like, kind of rusted out, so I think we could use some newer hardware. Next slide, please. So, I know it's kind of hard to see, but I started taking one of them apart, and on the very bottom, you can see that this part needs to be welded. I'm hopeful to find somebody in town that can just, you know, do that. We have a lot of time until the holiday season, so. Taking all the wreaths and lights off of each of them, and not just the ones that go on top of the lights, but the ones in front of Mr. Hicks' house as well, which are a different shape. Those all need the same treatment. Weld the frames, there's a lot of broken ones. Order new wreaths, lights, and hardware. Order other diverse signage and decorations, and then work on some of this restoration in the upcoming months. And then, of course, recruiting volunteers for the put-up and the takedown when those months come. Next slide, please. So, again, getting back to the grant writing, diversity, equity, and inclusion is a big part of the AARP Grant, and it's also one of the main values of the Rotary. So, this really fit in well with having the Rotary sponsor it. So, not only will there be Christmas decorations, we're also looking to highlight other cultures, Quanta, Hanukkah, Latino folks, and we're actually looking into other subcategories as well. And then, of course, the wordage, the wording in the grant, the verbiage, focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion while improving the built and social environment of a community for all ages and meet the needs of diverse populations, create vibrant public spaces in the communities through solutions that improve open spaces, parks, and access to other amenities for residents, and that includes public art installations that make space more inviting for multi-generational use. Next slide, please. This, you don't need that slide. I presented this to the Rotary, so it just doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about here. So, here's the second one I'd like to write. I'd like to go for two of them, again, knowing that the likelihood of either is slim, and I still would like both to be addressed. Next slide, please, is the sign right out here. So, there's a sign, I think we all probably know this sign too, and I think it had two sides, and one had recently, you know, rotted away, and this also needs to be addressed. And the Chamber has already gotten quotes and things on this, and I've gotten some quotes as well to do this. Next slide, please. And then, of course, how does this fit into the AARP Grant? Well, if I write it in that it increases civic engagement with innovative and tangible projects, and then have a design challenge where residents submit files for it, so you know, you're sort of reaching out to the community and seeing what folks want on the sign. Of course, there'll be criteria, like we want to mention Hedge Creek Falls, it might be, you know, premature to mention Moss Bray, but, you know, when folks are driving north through town, what do we want to highlight as a town to the north, so people don't like get on the highway and leave? And then on the other side of the sign, maybe coming south, something like, I don't know, you're almost downtown, or restaurants, hotels, I don't know, you know? So, just having a group of folks develop criteria and then having some sort of community challenge, so that it not only fits into the AARP Grant criteria with engaging the community, but also, there's a lot of really talented young people with tech skills that are pretty incredible, and maybe reaching out to the high school or the college of Siskiyou to do this as well. And then having a panel of judges for submissions, the files, I've spoken to the sign company, many sign companies, they need to be native files, you know, so just having information like that if we put a design challenge out to the community. And then, of course, the quotes that I got also have graphic arts support as a line item in case we don't get submissions and we have to pay an actual graphic artist to do this. Next slide, please. And then just some experience with signage. This is actually a link. You click on that. There you go, perfect. I wrote a grant in 2021 for Talandali Park through the McConnell Foundation for $27,000, I think it was, and there was some signage that got put up there.
Did you want me to work to that?
Yeah, I just want to show as a side note to the community, so people know this is out here.
I'm not sure that's going to work because I'm sharing the screen.
Well, the companies that I got the quotes from are the same companies that did the signage in Talandali Park. And then there's also competing quotes from the company that did the signage at the Botanical Gardens as well. And there's a lot that goes into it, like what kind of frames you want and things like that. So, I'm asking the city of Dunsmere and the Chamber to support the sign project, and I'm also asking the Rotary to support the holiday decoration project. And regardless of the outcome of the grant, I am going to take my best shot at it. I would like community support in both of these small projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions from the council members before we move into public comment on the presentation today?
Just a thank you. If her best efforts are already signed, this will probably be another success, so I'm looking forward to what she can do with this.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And actually, we might be on the same wavelength because I've been talking to Caltrans about the bridge, because there's been graffiti that's been on it. And when you go southbound, you see one side of the wall, and when you go northbound, you see the other. And so, I saw the sign was down, so I've been talking to them on what the permitting looks like to be able to do murals on those, so we could even blow it up and do it as you're driving north. You'll see north, and you can do imagery of what is in North Dunsmere and advertises that way as well. So, if you're interested in adding something like that, I've got a call when I get back from vacation, and I can let you know what that permitting looks like to put possibly a north and then a south on either side of the bridge.
Yes, yes, thank you. I appreciate all the support you can give.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll now move into general public comment. This is the time in our agenda for comments about items that are under the purview of the City Council, the city of Dunsmere, that are not on our agenda, or if you'd like to make a comment on our consent agenda, which is only one item tonight. Our consent agenda is our check register for January 28th through February 10th of this year. So, you may come up to the podium and address the city council. You'll have three minutes on any items not on the agenda. You may also come up and comment on the presentation as well if you so choose.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tim Holt?
Speaking of decorations for downtown, as I think many of you know, the library is planning to put a colorful mural on its north wall. It's really the most dramatic example of the library's community outreach efforts that include our upcoming Saturday afternoon movies, speaker series, and hopefully in the near future, a special section of the library devoted to providing information on local history, starting a new business, and other useful information. Our mural project's gotten a little bit complicated due to questions about the physical condition of that wall, which may have some mold infestation. The president of the library board, Tom Johnson, and I, and myself, met recently with the city manager who told us the city is assessing what sort of repair work needs to be done on the wall. We will meet again in early April to discuss what the repair estimate is and go from there. When the repairs are made and the mural project moves forward, the Friends of the Library Board will raise the estimated $4,000 cost of the mural, and we will also at that time ask the city to do its part on a city building by waiving the $745 application fee for the project. Thank you. I hope you're, Dustin, Mr. S, I hope you heard that last part.
You're addressing the city council, so could you please?
Okay, I hope, Madam Mayor, that the city manager heard what I said about waiving the fee. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on items not on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, council members, members of the community, my name is Peter Arth, 5859 Sacramento Avenue, and I sort of want to surf off of the energy of the prior two speakers tonight with the notion that I'm urging this council and its staff to be relentless in the process of vision, planning, and executing the plan. And as you've organized yourself to do your work in 2023, you have a finance committee and you have an airport committee. And if you look at the breadth of the mission of the airport committee, it's much more than simply maintaining a small regional airport. And what I passed out is a proposal from one of the candidates for the city manager position that was ultimately won by our current city manager, who actually has a background and the chops to do something more with the airport than what has happened since the city inherited that asset from the county of Siskiyou. The goals that I hope the city adopts in the next few weeks or months is to address the issues on the finance committee side raised by our independent auditor, Charlie Pillion, and they are captured, there's nine of them, in our current budget, our two-year budget. If you look at the preface of the budget, there are a number of recommendations that have remained unaddressed. As far as the potential of this asset to advantage the residents of Dunsmere and the businesses of Dunsmere, I think the first 90-day proposal from the applicant that we didn't choose make a huge amount of sense. And I recognize the staff does not have the bandwidth. The council, even though one of the members is a real estate broker, it will take outside expertise. So, it is my hope that you figure out a budget allocation to hire a consultant that will prepare a request for interest solicitation for property near the airport. The rest of the page is self-explanatory, and the first contact is to be with Pacificor and its subsidiary, Pacific Power and Light. Renewable energy projects have been done by the city of Weed
Mr. Arth, you know, I'm going to keep you to your time.
And Malchasta. Why not the city of Dunsmere? Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Great. Are there any other general public comments on items not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. I'll close that out, and we will move over to council and staff member comments. I'd like to start with Sergeant Ortiz today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did talk to Sheriff Peru, well, I went up the chain to Sheriff Peru and conveyed your desire for a meeting in regards to the Siskiyou County, city of Dunsmere contract.
Thank you.
I've not heard back. So, for the month of January, the city of Dunsmere is contracted for 5,280 hours of patrol time for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. As of this date, 3,631 hours have been completed. Fifty-eight percent of the fiscal year is complete. We're approximately 69% of the contracted hours have been completed. For the month of January, the sheriff's office provided 580 hours of law enforcement service. We had 182 calls for service. That's combined with self-initiated activity. We took 13 cases. We had one felony arrest and five misdemeanors. So, for the month of January, we had four burglaries reported versus one last year. It's not a crime spike. It's the same house on the 5900 block of Castle Avenue. This was a husband and wife that are hickering and stealing things, or accusing one another of stealing. So, three of the four were killed. Other than that, the crime has been down. The deputies have been doing a lot of school checks. We had 40 for just the month, 21 security checks, 21 patrol checks. They contacted 12 different pedestrian-type stops, six suspicious vehicles. They're being very proactive, and I think the numbers reflect it. We're not seeing especially the late-night street walking, stealing, lurking about that we used to see. And I blame that on the proactive approach of that. Thank you for your change.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Sergeant Ortiz today?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's right. Michael, you will need to remind me that you are there. Thank you for speaking up. All right, we'll move now to City Manager Reeve.
Mayor, council, and members of the public, so this, we are really kind of getting down to the wire and having to focus on moving the public works facility. So, later on in the packet, we'll talk a little more about that, but that's really where we're putting 95% of our resources for the next couple of weeks. We have, so we have started cutting trees behind the Lions Club, and we're asked that the public, we have had a couple instances where the public has come into there during the operations in the middle of the day, and so we're asking that they please stay out. We are removing the wood off-site to, over near the train, and train engine on the other side by the community center, and if they want the wood, the wood is free to the public to take. But we're, we just have a large number of dangerous trees that we need to get taken down.
Could you, for every chance we get, could you, again, just give a brief understanding for the people out there, what's happening to us, the fact we have to move?
Yes.
A lot of people may not be aware.
Yeah, and I was going to address that in the agenda item.
Thank you.
We, Blake and I kind of had a short discussion today. We're planning to have a finance committee in early March. We need to schedule a solid waste committee meeting. I just got some, the data back on our tipping fees and that kind of stuff, so we can run some numbers and kind of move forward on some of the other stuff we need to look at. Union Pacific is gearing up to be in full active mode in there. I mean, it's already starting. There will be a new modular placed on their, the north parking, or the upper parking lot by the Amtrak building. That modular and that location will be off limits. Once it's placed, that will be for Union Pacific staff only and not accessible for use in any other capacity until the project, until it's moved off, back to the other side of the tracks after the project's complete. That is, there is a negative impact to Amtrak. Just received notification today that that project, UP, is requesting that they potentially, or consider shifting that project to 2024 from 2023 just due to, just constraints on the project. And so, I'm working to set up some, a meeting with Amtrak and kind of what their plan is moving forward. And other than that, everything else I will address in the item for the Public Works Building.
Great. Are there any questions for City Manager Reeve? Councilmember Clarno, since you're on Zoom, I'll let you go first. Do you have any comments for tonight?
Just that I'm sorry I can't be there in person. As you can probably hear from my voice, I'm getting over a little cold and want to risk getting anybody else sick. So, the only couple things I want to go over tonight, just because it's, obviously, my voice is a little strained, is I attended both the Chamber of Commerce mixer and this month's Chamber of Commerce meeting. The mixer was very well attended by members of the local business community, and that the Chamber is starting to work on getting all the events ready for this year, and it's looking like there's going to be some good ones. Those are my comments for this evening.
All right, thank you. Great, Councilmember Deutsch?
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, I'd like to verify that we're set for a special Caltrans briefing next Thursday night at 6:00 PM in the community center. What this has to do with is the road charge pilot program, which is meant to look at the fact that with all the new electric vehicles out there, those aren't paying taxes at the gas pump that go towards road maintenance. So, Caltrans, like all the states across the country, is looking at a pilot program to see how that would work to tax or bring in revenue from the electric vehicles. I was reached to, I was reached out to by Sacramento Division of Cal Cities to see if I could put this on, and the council last week, last time, approved it. So, I'm going to try and get the high school students, some high school students, to do some community service to set up and take down. From our standpoint, I guess all we would need would be maybe Blake or whoever with computer, et cetera. I'm going to see if we could also stream that so other folks can see it. So, that'll be next Thursday at 6:00 PM. As many people can be there would be fine. I mean, we're going to try and get people from out throughout the county. I know that the PAO of Caltrans is going to be putting something in the Dunsmere News and the Siskiyou Daily, so that'll be getting out, and it'll give Dunsmere some good visibility and also connections with good folks at Caltrans, which always helps. On another item, I want to report on the fact that we had our first planning meeting for the volunteer fair scheduled for April 30th at 1:00 to 5:00 PM in the community center. We had about eight people there, which was a pretty good start. We're now scheduled to have others. We're now scheduled to have other meetings coming up, so the next meeting will be on March 13th and then another one on April 10th. And both of those will be to begin collecting the information. And the bottom line is what we're trying to do is have each of the organizations in town that has a volunteer base that they depend on to identify the different volunteer slots, different types of volunteers, and et cetera, so that we could eventually move into a system where each year people come in with the expectation they can either go online or attend the fair and find a way to connect with all the opportunities around the city. So we're working on that and I think we've got some good energy going there. We've got some posters and flyers that'll be coming out and so that's what's going on there. Finally, yesterday at the Local Transportation Commission, I was elected as a vice chair of the commission and I'm also on a three-person committee that will be looking at RFP proposals for the new executive director. And that committee will also be working at developing some memorandum, some understanding and, and protocols for the relationship between the LTC and the county, which has been kind of a problem in the past. We had a really good briefing from some consultants that came in and analyzed everything. So we've got some new energy going forward to trying to make the LTC a more function, better functioning organization.
Congratulations. Are there any questions for Councilmember Deutsch?
Was that 6:00 PM for the meeting on Thursday?
Yeah.
Councilmember Brian?
I've been working on various projects, but none of them are ready for presentation tonight, Madam Mayor, so you can sit with me.
All right, thank you. I have quite a few meetings in the interim. I had a really lovely meeting with the executive director of the Pacific Crest Music Festival to see how the city of Dunsmere can better support that event. For those of you who don't know, the Pacific Crest Musical brings in talented artists from all over the United States and the world to play various concerts. They go through an intensive workshop here for a couple of weeks and then they play at Hops, the Methodist Church in Mount Shasta, and then they also play at the Botanical Gardens, classical music. So they do a very intensive workshop for that. They bring in some very lovely people and we want to make sure that they fall in love with us and never want to leave, so we have good music all the time. So meeting with them to see how we can better support the arts and the infrastructure needed for them. The other meetings I had was I had a brief meeting with Cheryl Petty at the Chamber to talk about promoting different events, what the Chamber is going through right now and some of the new ideas that they have there about that going on. I apologize, I could not attend last Tuesday, but I heard it was very lovely. Outside of that, just kind of organizing some other projects as well similar to Councilmember Brian. And so one of the other things too is we're shooting to have a workshop in March with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council and the Chamber of Commerce to develop a one- to two-year strategic plan around economic development priorities. We have a contract with SEDC to provide economic development services to us, but we have not been very active in setting goals and projects for them to pursue. They also manage Discover Siskiyou, which is paid through the Tourism Business Improvement District, which helps market different areas of Siskiyou County as well as provide funding for events. So hoping to have them in March and hoping everybody can join us to talk about some economic development improvements. And I know our city manager has also been working with them as well to talk about our economic development grant that we're working on for a downtown revitalization plan. So we're hoping to have a really good relationship with them moving forward and just trying to get a lot of stuff going forward. But thank you for talking to Sheriff Larue. I will reach out to him as soon as possible to set up some meeting dates so we can go over the contract and work with that. Great. Any other comments?
I, I forgot I was, it's been a busy week. What I, in March or early April, what I'd like to do is I'd like to get the council out to the Springs as we get ready to start the Springs project and, and so we can kind of have a, just a general informational discussion about what, what's going. We did meet with St. Germain today, kind of went through the project, and so I'd like to get the council out to the Springs and see that.
All right, thank you. Perfect. All right, I'll move us into committee reports. Did any committees meet in the interim? All right, seeing none, we'll move to approval of the minutes for February 2nd, 2023. Is there any discussion on the minutes or a motion to approve?
I believe we approve the minutes second.
All right, motion in a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Clarno?
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
And myself as an aye. Thank you. We'll move into the consent agenda. So we have one item today. It's our check register for January 28th through February 10th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
I'll move.
Oh, he's got, that's fine, give it to him.
All right.
I moved to adopt the consent agenda.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it then.
All right, motion in a second. Roll call vote, Councilmember Clarno?
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
And myself as an aye. We can pay people. We'll move to item number nine is public hearings. We have none for tonight, so move into old business. Item 10A is Mossbury Falls Ad-Hoc Committee Appointment, Resolution 2023-04. And I'll let our city manager take over unless you want me to?
No. So as we mentioned a couple of meetings, a couple of meetings ago, right? I think it was two meetings ago, in discussing, yeah, it was towards the beginning of January. So about adding a committee for officially, officially added a committee for Mossbury Falls and that kind of landing back on the city's lap. And so this resolution before the council is to officially adopt for, for this committee and so we can move forward in starting communications and being active with the Mossbury Falls project and hoping to get people, keep people there in the next few years.
Great, are there any questions?
Safely, safely.
Yes. Are there any questions before we move into public comment?
We had two people already identified, right?
Yeah, I was hoping Councilmember Kaiser was here because he had expressed some interest, so I wanted to give him a chance to do that, but I know that Matthew and I had also expressed interest in doing that as well. So I'm going to open this item up for public comment. If you'd like to come up and address the council, you'll have three minutes, similar to the general public comment, if you'd like to comment on the potential formation of a Mossbury Falls ad hoc committee. And just a reminder for our members on Zoom, you can go to the reactions button on your toolbar and raise your hand and you will also be able to make public comment. And I apologize for not bringing that up soon. Right? Mr. Arf?
Well, I guess the question is, will there be public members on this committee or not?
You know, that's not back and forth.
If there are, I think it would be wise to acknowledge that there is significant private interest and private investment in making the Mossbury Trails happen. And obviously, there is a gifted trail designer that is part of this years-long effort and there are private donors that have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this dream, and I think it would be wise to include them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And to address the comments so far, we have it just as an ad hoc committee of two council members at this time because the negotiations with Union Pacific are very intimate to the city of Dunsmere. They're not a very transparent group and typically do not like a lot of people in those meetings. But what I did include in terms of the mission in the proposed resolution was that part of the mission is the mission of the ad hoc committee shall be to address the potential risk of visiting Mossbury Falls as well as the impacts of increased visitors to surrounding neighborhoods and Mossbury Falls. So part of that ad hoc committee's commission will to be, were, is to come back to this council with recommendations on to address the entire project. So they're not just focused on the trail, they'll also be working with members of the Shasta Retreat area as well as the upper part near the water bolling plant. So I tried to make sure that it was all encompassing so that we can address some of those impacts that we've experienced. And we have, we have already contacted a couple of the members who are interested in funding. And then as part of a first meeting, we will probably meet with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. They're very interested in getting back involved with the process, been in email communications with them prior to this meeting. So I'll take it back to council. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Deutsch?
I recognize that there's a lot of love in Councilman Kaiser's heart for this particular project. At the same time, I recognize that you two have an energy and a set of contacts that are, are new and fresh. I would just recommend that one of the things that Mr. Kaiser did at the beginning was to have a meeting where he pulled all the people together that were involved, all the stakeholders, and just had a discussion without anything. So I would recommend, in fact, I would move that you two be appointed, but at the same time, carrying it forth with the spirit that Kaiser started about a decade ago, so.
Do you also want to make a motion to approve the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, start that off first.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
All right. There's a motion to approve their resolution as well as to appoint Councilmember Brian and myself as the representatives. Is there any, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Councilmember Clarno?
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
And myself as an aye. Motion carries and we will let everyone know as we move forward. Again, I think as part of the process being on the committee, thank you for the appointment. But my full intent is to also ensure that we do also have public stakeholder events to not even just get particular people who are interested, but in general, members of the public concerned who live there. I know the Shasta Retreat area in particular gets the brunt of the visitation issues, so making sure that they're involved in this process is going to be really crucial for success. So thank you. We'll move to our second item for old business, which is item 10B, which is discuss and recommendation for change to the city protocols. So this had come up in a previous conversation with the city manager and I know that other council members have voiced concern over the protocols in the past couple of years. My intent for this item is to not approve any recommendations tonight, but if we are interested in recommendations, to state so, I want to make sure that we have two meetings to allow members of the public to also make comments and also to have us kind of mull over everything in this document because it is pretty extensive. So I'm hoping that today we can just have a good discussion and give direction to the city staff for updates in the protocols. So our city manager had sent out an email to the council members at my request to ask that everybody to go over the protocols and provide notes. I'm not, I know that we had heard from Councilmember Deutsch. I, I did not hear from anybody else and I'm not sure if you did either.
I did not either.
Okay.
Just, just your, we put yours notes in here.
So basically.
As part of the packet, so.
Yeah, thank you.
It did show the edits already, but other than that, we did not have any, I know, do note that Deputy City Clerk has also provided some comments.
Yes. Do you want to share those comments while we're on it?
Sure. So currently, the, I'll just read it, it's probably easier. Currently, the city council protocols, state the agenda packet should be available at the front counter by noon Monday before the council meetings. We're having some timing challenges and getting all this stuff to the clerk in a timely manner. So in order to provide an adequate time to edit, compile, and collate, distribute publicly post, she's requesting that, from the staff and the council, that all packet materials, including staff reports, memos, resolutions, be delivered to City Clerk by end of day Friday prior to the meeting rather than Monday. And I, I would fully support that because, you know, one of the challenges for us is to turn around time and that's just, because we don't always know what's on the agenda until after our Thursday meeting as part of the council. And so I would fully support that as well.
Would it be possible to post at the end of business Monday to give yourself more reaction time for the pre-agenda meeting?
Yeah, I, so I think that, she was just saying the delivery of the, of the documents, but that, so that gives us, you know, if they're delivered to us by Friday, by end of day, then she has the time on Monday to compile in order to post in time. So her 72 hours basically is 6:00 PM on Monday prior to the meeting, so.
So what you're saying is that they have to be there by 5:00 on Friday and then they'll be available by 6:00 or 5:00 on Monday?
Correct. Well, yeah, I mean, we, we'll have them out before that because our end of day is 4:30, but yes.
Yeah, 4:30.
Yeah, I believe we set a very advantageous goal to have extra time for the general public to take a look at our agendas at City Hall by having them done by noon, and that's not always attainable, especially with later items. I know we've already had two items on here that got added last minute. Things happen. For members of the general public, we follow the Brown Act, which is the state statutory requirement for posting, and so we must post 72 hours in advance prior to this meeting, which is 6:00 o'clock on Mondays, but obviously we're, we're closed after that. So it's, it's nice to have people be able to read the, the hard copy if we can get it out before then. But yeah, I, I, you know, the, when we brought it up, I had City Manager Reeve and, and City Clerk Perkins had emailed me about this and I said that I think it would be appropriate to bring to the council for discussion as part of the protocols.
And, and as John just whispered in my ear, it may be more advantageous to back everything up another day. So maybe moving, you know, because as part of the protocol, we meet on Thursdays, but maybe meeting Wednesdays instead of Thursdays and then, and then being able to have those documents on Thursday rather than Friday.
That's the schedule you're talking about, that awful close.
I know.
It's hard to put it all together, have the information available, and God knows what else has happened at the same time, so.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, we can have that as the discussion. Pre-agenda meetings are flexible, they're not mandated in the protocols to be a certain day, so we could easily adjust that schedule. I have no problem. So yeah, so these are mainly my edits. Most of them are just kind of cleaning up some of the language as well as making it a little bit easier to read. One of the changes I did make was changing the word citizens and members of the public because residents of our city may not be citizens, but they are still members of the public and are very important to us. It's just being sensitive in the language that we use to make sure everybody feels included. And then on that note, really the major change that I'd like to recommend for council consideration is the addition of a land acknowledgement to our city council agendas. And so I provided the American Planning Association California chapter kind of guidebook on page 50 of the agenda packet on what a land acknowledgement is and why it's kind of important to have, especially in the state of California. So a land acknowledgement is a formal statement of a public entity, just kind of publicly recognizing the unique relationship that indigenous people have as stewards of the land and the enduring relationship that exists between them, them and the traditional land in which they used to live. And just kind of acknowledging the fact that we as a city, we're not, we were not first here and trying to acknowledge the full history of this region as well as the legacy that's been left for us to benefit from. Obviously, the stewardship of this region, it really shows through in the amount of clean water that we have and it's not from our doing that it's been remaining clean forever. And so it's really important to me, you know, moving into this position this year, I want to really showcase the uniqueness of this region, our residents, and the fact that we do have a very rich indigenous population and welcoming them back into the city. I think acknowledgement is a first step of that. The city of Glendale went through a very comprehensive process in 2020 to really take a look at, you know, social justice issues and racial tensions in the, in the city of Glendale, which was a sundowntown, which if you're not familiar with the term, a sundowntown was a jurisdiction that had municipal code sections that outlawed people of color from being outside after the sunset and basically codified racial issues into municipal codes. And so the planning profession as a whole have been finding it very important to have conversations around these hard topics. They're not very fun topics, but it's really important to acknowledge the history that we have. And so this is kind of part of that whole kind of framework that Glendale put forward, which the first step of it is acknowledgement. The second is apologizing and the third is atonement and basically working with our people of color, our indigenous populations and those who are underrepresented or who were historically suppressed using municipal code as well as zoning laws. If you haven't had a chance to read it, there is a really wonderful book called The Color of Law, which takes a look at the racial history of government and zoning. And they actually use San Francisco as like the starting place of showcasing how people have used zoning to legalize discrimination without calling it discrimination. It's a really lovely book. If people are interested, I can send them the citation for that. But, you know, I think it's really important, you know, we do the pledge of allegiance, we acknowledge, you know, the history of our country through that. And so I think it's important to add the land acknowledgement after that. And so if we are choosing to move forward with this, what I would like to do is prior to the next meeting, reach out to the various tribes that claim cultural heritage in this region to let them know what we're proposing to do and getting their feedback on. and getting their feedback on it, as well as inviting them if we do choose to add this to our agendas. I think it just, it creates a better will between everybody. And it also just again acknowledges that rich history that we have prior to the railroad and logging and bringing that all full circle. So there's a number of different recommendations in the document that I provided in terms of having in-person event statements, webinar statements and different acknowledgements. And so if we do move forward with this, I would bring back specific language, including all of those tribes that claim cultural significance to add to the agendas. Were there any other amendments proposed for the council protocols today or any questions?
I have one I'd like to discuss that actually is up today. And that is adding in the new rules for a council member attending remotely if they're sick or on city business or providing for a dependent. I believe the specific rule is AB 2449. Just making sure that language is included in the council protocols.
Thank you. So Assembly Bill 2449, our city attorney, John Kenny, has provided us a brief memo of this a couple of months ago. And so this is the new law amending the Brown Act, which allows council members who have just cause, as defined by the city council, to basically attend virtually. And so we need to put in place some of that language. So I think this would be a good time to codify that in our policies. And so I think that's a really good idea. Thank you. I'm just making it out. All right, any other questions for tonight? And then I will open this up for public comment.
I think mine's more discussion.
Okay, so I will now open up public comment. This is a time to make a public comment on the protocols. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Still Tim Holt? I want to comment on one item in the protocols. It is G, section G, number eight.
Which, which pages is that on?
G, section, number eight, section G, number eight. It says, I'll just read it, "Participation in debate on any item before the council shall be limited to members of the council, although council members may ask members of the public for additional information." So there may be members of the audience who know as much or more than council members about the matter being discussed and can make a real contribution to the discussion at hand. This is not San Francisco or LA or Sacramento. There are not 50 or 100 people sitting out there in the audience eager to speak. In this small town, you have the advantage, I think, of forming more of a partnership between council members and those few active and engaged residents who show up at these meetings. We certainly want to dispel the notion that all wisdom, intelligence and knowledge is embedded exclusively in the council. So I would amend the protocols to say that the mayor, at his or her discretion, can recognize audience members who raise their hands during council deliberations to ask a question or to make a comment. Another alternative to that that's been suggested to me is you could also, so you have your, your council discussion, public comment. Then the council starts to talk about how it's going to vote essentially. Possibly you could have one more sequence of public comment after your, you know, your final discussion in case council members have something to add, some information, a question or whatever. But again, it's really about a little, I guess you could say more equality between yourselves and the audience. These are intelligent, you know, active people and I think you should encourage them a little more than you are with your protocols. Thank you very much.
All right, are there any other public comments? Any public comments on Zoom? I believe that is Mr. Hicks.
Ah, no, no comment.
Okay, sorry, I saw the hand go up, so.
No, that was to say I was agreeing with Tim Holt's remarks.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other general comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment section into discussion and I'll start with Councilmember Brian. You had brought up a point that you wanted to discuss.
Oh yeah, well, you actually covered a vast majority of the reasons I wanted to revisit the protocols. Still a lot of little errors wrong in the city.
Yep.
Situation, stuff like that. Regarding the land acknowledgement, it's very interesting and I am supportive of bringing this out and forward. You know, you speak of acknowledgement, apology, atonement. I would, in reviewing, you know, possible versions, some I liked in certain respects. Because I thought they maybe fit with our situation more for our meeting. But I realized I have, and I love history, I love local history. There's not particularly good information about the tribes that inhabited this canyon prior to the railroad. I would, it doesn't have to be an ad hoc, perhaps Matt America could head this up. But I would be in favor of us crafting our own specific statement that really is from our heart rather than adopting one of these. But I'd really move for us to, you know, not just acknowledge it as if we've heard it from someone else, but really do a little investigation so that future generations of council and people in the city maybe have a resource now that we can capture that won't be available if we wait decades to do it.
One of the links in the memo that I provided actually takes you to an indigenous historic registry that does a really good job of logging all of the secession documents as well as historic cultural documents as well. And then the state Native American Heritage Commission also has a website as well. It's a digital atlas to take a look at different cultural regions as well as contact information for them. And so I think part of it is, yeah, that exploratory portion of, you know, which tribes. I have to find it. I did share it with Councilmember Deutsch in our pre-agenda meeting.
Well, for me, beyond which tribes, because I, as I understand it, there were three, and I could be wrong, but there were three tribes that would have interacted in this area. But that, I don't know to what extent they had permanent dwellings here. I'd like to know how they, if we still have that knowledge, how they interacted with our beautiful canyon. You know, did they come up and use it as a sacred area with the waterfalls? I think that would be of enormous importance if we still have, you know, we should be time-wise just within range of people still being alive who knew their grandparents, who, you know, had a connection, in-person connection to some of those memories. And I think we'll lose that really fast, you know, if we get to 200 years out. So I'd love to know in what capacity the different tribes were coming through here. Was it the summer, summer grounds that they came up to, you know, if that's available? And I guess what I'm suggesting in conjunction with this, I'd love to have some time, whether it's the town historian or some group of people, but get some, the best information we can on this so we could kind of codify it going forward.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea and we can look into it. I'll send some emails out. There's definitely somebody who has the information on this. I met a very lovely librarian from San Diego at the state conference who runs a very comprehensive cultural atlas in the library system. So that, that could be an option for us as well. But thank you. Yeah, I'm just taking notes.
I guess I'd like to see something like this continue and a lot of small towns have their own museums. We have a railroad museum. I've long thought, you know, it's been a cherished dream of mine that Dunbar eventually have a historical museum. And this would be a good way to gather stuff for that future endeavor.
Thank you. Councilmember Deutsch?
Yes, first of all, for the public, I, after having listened to Mayor Lucchese talk about this during the pre-agenda meeting, she's a fountain of information and passion about this, so we have a real resource here in the mayor. I would say that I totally agree with Councilman Brian. I think that we really don't know very much about what's here. So I would think there's a small part of this which would talk about what happens as far as council meetings and et cetera. Beyond that, I would see something that maybe the schools can get involved with, you know, and bringing it all up. But I really would like to learn more about the tribes here and the history of it. So any way we could help perk that along, I would totally support.
Thank you. Did you have any other discussion on items on the protocols as well?
As I said, I just looked through it and I thought they were fine. You know, we reviewed them about four years ago and so I'm still fine with the rest of it.
Perfect. Councilmember Clarnell?
I'm pretty happy with, when I read through it, with all the changes you had made and everything you had pointed out that was attached in the agenda packet. And I'd just like to reiterate what both Councilmember Brian and Deutsch have said in terms of, I'd love to learn more about what the, what the town, what was here before the town was here in terms of how the land was being used. I think that's very important to know our history.
Thank you. Right, and then I do want to circle back and address the public comment. One of the things that has been asked of us is public comment being more engaging in a back and forth. And our city attorney is here and could probably speak to this as well. One of the issues that we have with the Brown Act is that this is a business meeting. And so we follow a very orderly fashion to make sure people are all given an equal opportunity to speak and everybody is treated fairly and equally in that respect. One of the things we don't necessarily want to do is, you know, this back and forth, giving one person more opportunity than another. And so I don't feel comfortable going with those plans to expand that public comment. That being said, as we go through planning documents, we have an active transportation plan going on right now. We have the Mossbray Falls ad hoc that would probably host some public events that are catered to that kind of interaction that would then be brought to this meeting as well. And so I don't know if you want to add anything else?
Well, yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, I get the idea of what's attended, but as you know, in public comment time, which is not, you can't engage in interaction between the party because the subject matter isn't on the agenda. The second time the public comments, and you do it faithfully every time, is on any action, any matter that's on the agenda before action is taken. The protocols, I think, are well-written. It doesn't prevent the mayor or even council member for asking if there's an issue with respect, when you're doing your deliberation, with respect to wanting more information. And that, that is always fine and it's, it's with the prerogative of the chair in any meeting. So it's not like somebody has something valuable to say that they can't. What you want to guard against frankly is, is the public deciding that they're engaging in part of the deliberations and they are not. They're here to bring information and that. If somebody wants an example of what can happen, I know the drastic example, take a look on the internet on the Shasta County's Board of Supervisors meetings. And I tell you, that's a good, there's conversation going back and forth all the time, totally inappropriate. So, I mean, you want, you want an opportunity, this is a business meeting and you run it right and you do it well. But you want an opportunity for everybody to comment and all the information to get out. Then it goes to the city council, the only elected people in the room, by the way. So there may be five faithful citizens here, but you people are elected to make the decision and you have a deliberation and it's your call. If you want help during that process, you ask for it. That's all.
Thank you. All right, I would like to motion to table this item to the next meeting.
So moved.
Right, any dissent on tabling that item to just give everyone some extra time to take a look at it? And then I'll draft up a proposed language for the land acknowledgement. All right, seeing no dissent, we'll move forward with that item. All right, thank you. So now we'll move into new business. So item 11A is an update on our code enforcement activities and priorities and I'll hand that over to City Manager Reeve.
All right, Mayor and Council, due to our not-so-long agenda, I felt like it was a good opportunity to take the time to do an update on code enforcement and just have a little discussion about that and kind of where we're at. A little over three years ago, I believe you, Mark was hired to take on as community service liaison. And that capacity is, there's far more to do than, and then Mark has time in a day. And, and I just wanted to reiterate and thank Mark for everything he does do. And so from, I kind of just laid out the kind of where we're at on priorities and what we're doing in order to address some of the issues in the community. Number one is addressing the quality of life and their housing. Life, health and safety are taking top priority. You know, junk, junk and abandoned cars, no water services, unlivable conditions, substandard properties, those kind of things. That list is currently probably in excess of 12 properties. A couple, we have boarded up one, gone through the receivership process. And we plan on continuing with the receivership process for a number of other properties as we have now kind of figured that process out. Number two, address vehicle code infractions, you know, parking on, you know, illegal parking, whether it be in a red zone or 72 hours and those kind of issues. Then go after properties that owe the city money, liens and those kind of things. So that's kind of a parallel, a lot of these run in parallel and they don't always happen all at the same time. But just so people kind of understand, another one that we're dealing with, fire damaged properties that they've, once they are fire damaged and the inspection and investigation is completed by the fire, by the fire chief, then that is turned over to the building official. And the building official and Mark work together to, you know, depending on the situation, on what needs to be addressed. And that's some of the other code enforcement actions we take that isn't always on Mark, but it does fall in the building side. And we're trying to get a little more aggressive on that. We've had one property that is, there was a fire in 2018 and it still hasn't been fully addressed. And so we're being a little more aggressive on those fronts now. And kind of setting some timelines and deadlines, like we need to be in active permit status on correcting those. Or I think we need to move to abate and, and from a city standpoint and then go, go after it from a different angle. Then vacant and distressed buildings, so we've received a number of emails on where we're at on that. You know, the challenge, the challenges we have, and you know, I want to commend Sergeant Ortiz for standing by with Mark here just this last week on one challenging property. And when you enter those kind of properties where there's rodents and feces and all of that kind of stuff, really an abandoned and vacant building means absolutely nothing when we have people that are living in unsanitary conditions. And so our priority is, puts all of those first. And so, you know, the vacant and distressed buildings, we are working on that. It's, it's been a process, but we only have so many resources. So we can only move stuff as forward as fast as possible as we can. So we have non-registered buildings, inspection of registered buildings to address nuisance and building code-related issues. And then inspection warrants, it'd probably be about the process that that happens in. But we have not gotten fully through that process yet. We do have a number of, the primary thing is we're trying to get them on the list to even, you know, like, look, we know it has no water services, been vacant. So there's a number of those type of issues where they are vacant or distressed that we, they're not registered. And so we're, that's the primary component we're trying to, like, okay, we need to reckon, you guys need to recognize or the individual needs to recognize that, look, you fall under this component. And then, then we're slowly working on the other issues to try and get into, to do inspections. But we, we are, we just are short, short on personnel. And I don't know if Rich wants to comment on anything that's been happening, but he's been active in a lot of it.
Thank you. Mark Allen's been an amazing partner on this. You know, I believe that was yesterday, in fact, on Dunbar Avenue. Myself and another deputy responded to what started out as just an audible alarm. And when we went into the building, it was vile. And Mark, one quick phone call and not even two minutes later, and Mark's on scene and looking it over. It, it was troubling that somebody could live that way. You know, it was a two-story residence that had been converted into two separate apartment areas is the one I'm speaking of.
Yep.
There, there was just, I'm not an insect expert or. There, there was just, I'm not an insect expert or anything like that, but it became apparent to me that there was no chance the folks downstairs could not be suffering or being exposed to a rodent and insect infestation. And, you know, I, I'd like to commend Mark on the fact we, we did contact the residents downstairs. They're elderly. They, they had other challenges at play. And Mark took it upon himself. The man was non-ambulatory, so he couldn't get to the reset resource center. Mark took his information at the drop of a hat with, and ran it down just to get him lined up with the resources. As opposed to, you know, just trying to stick the thumb down and, and take these people's home from them. But it is, it was horrible, the living conditions there. And, you know, my hat's off to him. He really went above and beyond, I thought, in the sense that he wanted to connect these folks with resources as opposed to just, you know, being the callous mean government and stripping them of their home. And we lined them up with kerosene heat. We're not that moment, but there's a, there's at least a plan in place now. And, and we're exploring options on how to remove all the garbage and fecal matter out of the upstairs area. That's my comment.
One, one of the other areas that we are working on, we're looking into partnering with the Siskiyou Humane Society to assist with, with dogs. We do have a beautiful dog that is eligible for adoption that has been with us for way too long. And they have, they, they're there every day and that's their primary goal is, you know, so after, in, in the event that we get a dog and it's not claimed, we have, after 72 hours, then it's available for adoption. This dog's been with us since I think early December. And so we're working on trying to, you know, negotiate a partnership with them, much like Mount Shasta has. And so we could just, after a 72 hour period, we could, or we would probably, if it's not a weekend, the goal is to take it up there and then they could, people could access their, their pets there or, or they would be put up for adoption.
Thank you. I know that was a big thing when Councilmember Brian and I and Mr. Art here first got on city council is the number one complaint I think we heard was dogs, was dog bites and everything. And so that's, that has completely turned around. I don't think I nearly get any complaints anymore personally. I don't know about the rest of the council, but anyway, I, I think that portion has been, been doing really, really well. So are there any questions from the council members before I open up for a public comment?
Well, I did have one. How are we doing on the inspections of the two big properties downtown? You know, the ones I'm talking about.
It's the challenge. We're, we're working on a strategy for that.
So I think.
One, one other thing I had was, I, I would also like to commend Mark on everything he's done. It's really helped our, our crime reporting numbers to go down substantially. I would probably say he's the biggest reason for that happening.
Can you speak to the efforts, body camera policy, technology platform?
Yes, absolutely. So we, in the interest of the he said, he said, she said kind of component of what we deal with in code enforcement and, and we feel it's appropriate that Mark has entered in a number of situations, it's always Mark's fault, no matter what. And, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're not only protecting our staff, but, you know, and it, it's kind of works both ways. It, it, you know, keeps Mark in check. It keeps, you know, the people that he meets in check. And it kind of creates a less potential for being hostile. And if it does ever get to a situation where there is a discrepancy, we can just pull up the video. And so what we're looking at, at doing is developing the policy to, for Mark to have a body camera. We did discuss looking at a partnership with the sheriff's department, but then that, that came into just some challenges with maybe possible conflicts if it was, you know, criminal or something like that. And then we couldn't get access to that. So we wanted to keep separate from the sheriff's department in our, in our own component and and then kind of keeping on that technology platform. So as a part of a grant that we just submitted there, oh, I don't know, last, it was December or whatever. Yeah, Prop 64, that does allow for permitting and, and code enforcement type technologies to help, to help that process. So that helps with inspections and those kinds of things. And so I did, as part of that budget in that grant, I asked for a hundred thousand dollars to, to go forth. And, and the, I think the hardest part for, for Mark is just keeping track of all the paperwork, right? And, you know, every code enforcement action probably has, you know, 10 pictures and, you know, 10 pages of documentation and a, and a potential citation. And, you know, before you know it, you have a packet that's sick. Well, none of that's digitized. And so if, you know, for Mark to be able to go back or have follow-ups and something that automatically reminds you, hey, my, my 30 days are up on these, these three letters that I sent out or my seven days or whatever. We can, we can do a better job of tracking that. And so part of that grant is to access that. And if that grant doesn't come through, then hopefully the code enforcement grant that we're looking to apply for, that's coming out, I think in April, correct? Or something along that lines. That, that will also, we could throw that component back in that grant as well. As that, part of that process. And then process streamlining, that's just an ongoing effort, working with, with John and, and his, his office and then, and Mark and just trying to get it through the, you know, if we get to the court process, you know, just we got to make sure we follow the steps. Any, any technicality, much like in the, on the policing side, if there's a technicality, it gets thrown out, right? And so, you know, Mark's very diligent about keeping track of that. But, you know, sometimes you don't know what you don't know. And, and so we've, we've had, had some lessons that, you know, we've had to drop stuff. But on other occasions, we just wanted to, you know, want to make sure that we're continually looking at those processes and how to, how to make it as easy as possible to implement and explain.
I might point out, you know, the code enforcement is a slow process and it's a difficult process. Mark's, you know, he's, he's hard on it. And, oh, but, and you know, you know, we were going to experiment with receivership and that's gone through and that, that building is up for sale or to be fixed when, or torn down maybe, but, and we should be recouping our costs in that process. But, and, but I want to point out that, you know, some, sometimes we get a little antsy about how come it's taken so, so long. We do try to be very, very thorough on this because when we take it to the court, we don't want any shortfalls. And nothing that we've asked of the court has been denied us yet. And, and it's, I think, because we don't, the court trusts, trusts of what we're doing. But, you know, you have to earn that trust. So we're not going to take anything there until it's ready to get there.
Thank you.
City Manager, could you share the, the numbers that you shared with us the other day about how many homes are empty right now in Dunsborough?
Oh, I think that estimate's somewhere in the 20, 20% range, 20 to 30%.
I think it's higher than that.
Yeah.
Like 33.
Yeah. Okay. It's, it's up there quite a ways.
When we look at the housing shortage, that, that is a real component of it. There are houses out there that could be occupied if we move forward on them.
Correct. And, and that's, that's a component of the vacant, you know, well, that starts at the top, right? The health and safety ones, you know, so we have the ones that have had fires, you know, that are, I mean, there's an example up on North Dunsborough that has been there since 2018 and it's just been a, you know, kind of a problem. And we're working to end that problem if that means abatement and assessment to the property. And then, you know, force a sale, then that's what that means. But, you know, we ultimately don't want to get to that point. We want, we want those houses fixed up and reoccupied as soon as possible. And, and as we, you know, find out situations like what, you know, Sergeant Ortiz is explaining, those type of situations where it's an owner occupied, but there's just the health and safety concerns. It's, it's trying to get that standard up, you know, and of all those vacancies, you know, I mean, right now I believe we have around 70 Airbnbs that are registered in the community. And, you know, as we, we look at those, I mean, we have a lot of second homes here. But then we have a lot of homes that are somebody's second home from two generations ago. And then that, they tend to like fade off. They don't necessarily, if they're not actively coming up here, then that's when we start having issues and both rodents and those kinds of things. But also just, you know, people, potential break-ins and, and other stuff. So I think it's, it's important that we continue down this road and, and, you know, the faster we get through the top priorities, the faster we can get to the bottom ones, right? And there's, there was a lot on the top, unfortunately, with the health and safety stuff. And so, you know, once we get towards, you know, a little free time and can move faster on the, the other ones and, and get that process more established than the vacant and distressed component, we can put some more pressure on those property owners to, to get them occupied or get them to where they're livable.
Just sorry, really quickly and just to add to that, there is a community development block grant. So when you hear us say CDBG, that's what that means. There is a new code enforcement specific grant coming out of CDBG right now that could give us a lot of extra funding to have additional legal assistance, to have additional funding for abatement and receivership and potential ability to even contract an additional person to assist Mark. Because again, I think we, we really get confined by one, the timeline of what code enforcement takes, but also just the human capital and getting people to be able to start logging everything to follow the timelines and getting that additional assistance. So hopefully we can apply for that grant and that will also help with the furthering the process of the vacant and distressed building ordinance. Just being able to get that additional assistance.
Very excited about the technological advancements. I think we need to really find a way, if one grant doesn't work, we'll see others to do that. I have a question. I've been very curious about this. We've been working towards having a successful receivership for a long time. It's always been my cherished hope that once we actually have one that crosses the finish line and it is currently on the market.
Correct.
St. Clement Avenue and receivership, that all the owners we're dealing with, that, you know, word will get out that Dunsborough is serious. We are doing it correctly. Instead of fuming about us being unconstitutional, maybe they'll actually, you know, take, take the seriously that they need to have a safe environment and a place that's up to code. Has that been the case? Have we found that?
We haven't seen it yet. But, you know, I mean, we're starting to push more on the, you know, some of the fire damage properties. So we're pushing more on those. So that's, that's kind of the general direction we may have to go. Just based on, just based on the challenges we have there. So.
But we're allowed to disclose, I'm curious with that receivership, you know, being successful on, with you guys processing it, was the vacant and distressed building ordinance at all a factor and basis on which?
I would have, that was already active when I got here, so I wasn't too involved in that.
Was that ordinance one of many? Does it feature in your argument for receivership?
No, no. No, the, the receivership was just based on the property itself and Mark puts together the history of that room as well. And that's just been sitting unused, other than whoever, you know, and, and empty, empty residence is a target. It won't be empty for long, long. It just won't be occupied by anybody that's doing anything good to it. So that, that was just a long, long process of unused. And the, and the property owner at the end, you know, then suddenly, oh, I have somebody that wants to buy it and he was contacted and all that. No, so, but I mean, it got, you don't, I don't understand how people can own property and leave it vacant and not care about it, but it happens.
Happens quite a bit. So going on with that, is our vacant and distressed building ordinance the sort of ordinance that could be the basis for a receivership case? In your opinion, you reviewed the ordinance when we passed it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it could or couldn't, you know, the question. Ordinance is great, you know, but the enforcement of them is the issue, you know? If you can have a method that's easily enforced, then that's another issue. And I'd have to look at that again for that purpose. But you know, when you're mentioning funding, and this probably wouldn't be eligible for grants, but we're, we're proceeding, as a lot of small cities are, is we don't have the money. We could abate some of this stuff at city expense if we had the money available to do it. And in theory, you would recoup it in the end by putting a lien on the property. Now I have to tell you, that lien always doesn't work. But, but, you know, if you were looking for, if you had a fund available, you know, some, some of the small stuff, you could take care of real quick.
By doesn't work, you mean it doesn't?
Well, when it, when it goes up to tax sale, then our lien is going to be junior.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Only in tax sale situation.
Yeah, that's where it comes from.
Councilmember Clarno, any questions before we move into public comment?
No.
I have a quick question for John. John, so we started this off where we borrowed it from Weed. And I know that Todd, you host them, kind of bumped it up so it was a little more powerful. Weed has had some luck in receivership, haven't they? I mean, Weed has had some luck with receivership.
I don't know for sure.
So I, I have, I have had communications with Weed and actually we're, we're the first one in the county to accomplish it. So they're following our lead. So we, we beat them to the punch, but yeah. They, they were down that path and now they're in communication with us to try and continue that process.
I heard they've done some things. I talked to their city attorney. Their city attorney wasn't aware, but they was due to, but I don't know.
Just one more general question. I know we're, we're very interested in the vacant and stressed building ordinance because we were excited when we passed it three years ago. So a lot of times our council tends to focus on that. But just generally, because there's so many issues facing the city, we brought up vehicle codes, a lot of property issues, health and human safety. Could you summarize general time spent? Like is, is, is property abatement the main thing our code enforcement efforts go towards? Or is about half and half vehicles, property?
I would say probably 60%. 60 to 70% is focused on the health and public safety, you know, the, the number one. Vehicle infractions is probably 30 and then the 10%, you know.
Animal control.
Yeah, animal control and then everything else. You know, I mean, Mark only has so many hours in the day and, and that's why it's important that the Siskiyou Humane Society partnership, getting that accomplished is very important because that takes up a lot of Mark's time right now.
Right. Because any given day, animal control could take up most of the day.
Yeah. And like we have a dog that's been in the kennel for a month and we have to walk the dog and we have to feed the dog. You know, that responsibility falls back on us as well. And thanks to the Public Works and guys for helping out with that. But it's ultimately, it's become a, you know, a community, community, community friend.
Yes. Thank you so much.
All right. I will now open this for public comment. You may come to the podium or raise your hand via Zoom and you'll have three minutes on this item.
Sandra Hood, 6235 Hill Street. And today I'm representing Dunsborough Live. And I think I know, have some of my answers. But anyway, our organization is a strong supporter of any and all efforts to improve our historic district. And we have taken a particular interest in the city's two and a half year long effort to focus on vacant buildings in the historic district. By inspecting them and making sure that they comply with municipal building codes and therefore in basic rentable or leasable condition. And we have heard through the rumor mill that some of the owners of these vacant buildings, such as the theater, have thus far blocked these inspections despite the fact that the city's vacant building ordinance specifies that the owners of the vacant buildings, quote, shall provide access to the city to conduct an exterior and interior inspection of the building or structure to determine compliance and the municipal code, unquote. I hope at some point, or we hope at some point, that the city will be able to tell us what their strategy is to move around the resistance. And I'm sure there are others that are resisting also. But when, when it's possible, it would be nice to know what your strategies are. And maybe it is just waiting to get more money and more personnel, but we'd like to know. Thank you much.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Still Peter Art. So I've sat through this meeting actually hoping to hear the
Still Peter Art. So I've sat through this meeting actually hoping to hear the answer to the question that Councilmember Deutsch posed to the city manager and indirectly the city attorney. Part of my joy in working with the city historian, Ron McLeod, is a passion to save the historic buildings in our historic district, which led to Ron's selection of the pictures he selected that I paid to have framed so that when you're thinking about the future of the city you're overseeing, you'll pay attention to what's left of our past. It's wonderful to talk about indigenous tribes. Let's also talk about those who came before us and built the durable first buildings in our community. The answer to the question, what about the two buildings, which is sort of code word, was it's a challenge. That is the most opaque answer one could ever imagine. Of course, it's a challenge. But I've been out of town for 48 hours. I'm guessing when I walk up Sacramento Avenue tomorrow afternoon, I will look up at the top floor of the historic Weed Hotel, Dunsmere Hotel, and see a series of three windows that were blown out in the fire this past summer of 2022. The three windows that have been opened to the snow and rain and all of the elements of the weather. And they just sit there. They just sit there. And I can't imagine a court or a lawyer saying that's okay. We can't do anything about that. We really can't because it's a challenge. There was a citizen last year, while he's in the audience, that on an overall basis assessed the effort under the vacant and distressed building ordinance as timid. And it remains timid to this day. The city of Dunsmere will never move forward in rebuilding its economy and saving its historic district if you can't get beyond timid. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Right, seeing none, I'll close the public comment section. Correct me if I'm wrong. I believe you did walk through the steps that we're taking with the vacant and distressed building ordinance, which is to register. We are requesting inspections. Those who are not allowing us to inspect, the next step that we're moving to is inspection warrants. Could you maybe talk about what an inspection warrant is in the process and getting that and potentially give us an idea of how long that takes?
It's basically, it's basically a search warrant, but it's a civil search warrant. And you can get it if you have reasonable, reasonable cause to believe that there's building code violations and the occupant owner, whatever the building, had denied you access to the building. So then we get an inspection warrant, go to court, get an inspection warrant and get a time and a place for the inspection and take a look at it. Then what you end up with is a, you know, the code enforcement officer and the building inspector giving a report of what they found. And then it's just the same as that they've been permitted to have an inspection. And then you deal with those code enforcement, those code violations, like any other code violations. The inspection warrant gets you into the property. It's nice to say that we pass an ordinance that says we can get into any building anytime, but that doesn't work. So. That doesn't work. You don't have, if you pass a local ordinance that says I can get into your house anytime I want to, that doesn't give you the right.
So again, we're outside of public comment. Mr. Kenny.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. I apologize. Yeah. So, so then, so then you have a, then you deal with, deal with it as any other code violation. Sometimes it's, we are going to, we've had cases where the city abates the nuisance by cleaning it up at city expense and stuff. In that case, you have to get a warrant to again, enter the property and clean it up. So.
Didn't we set up a series of fines that escalate over time?
Yeah, we have that. Yeah.
Yep. And so those have been charged to all of the individuals who have registered. But my understanding from when you went over your list of priority properties, that fire damaged buildings are at the higher end of the list.
Correct. Right. Because they are health and safety related concerns. And so there's actions that are being taken that with strategies that I don't want to divulge in a public setting because it's a public meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or items for discussion from the council members? I'll go to Councilmember Claire now.
No, not right now.
Councilmember George.
I, I would like to just point out for people that weren't here five, 10 years ago, and not only were we run over by dogs all over the place, but at the same time, the crime really centered around a bunch of buildings that because the Mark Allen has done the job, he's done the wonderful job, he's done those buildings and those criminals and those people are in other places now. Is that right?
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah. So I think that when you look at a person who has made some of the biggest difference in this city over the last couple few years he's been here, Mark Allen deserves a salute and gratitude from all the people out there. He's helped make the city a lot nicer place to live and with a lot fewer complaints. Other than that, the only other thing I'd say is that I know that the whole vacant and abandoned building thing is, is a huge deal. I do feel that we're moving forward on it and I hope we continue. And if we're being timid right now, I hope we're being timid for the right reason and that we can turn, turn that timidity off whenever we get to the point where we're in good.
Councilmember Brian.
Thank you, city manager, city attorney, Mr. Allen. It has been very transformative the last two and a half, three years with code enforcement. I'm appreciative, but I look forward to our continued efforts. Thank you again.
Great. And I'll just conclude again. I understand it's very frustrating for people coming from my background with planning, property rights do still exist. It is very difficult to make the argument of economic welfare in an eminent domain situation and receivership situation. You have to show that there's a health, safety and welfare issue and welfare is the weakest one of the three that stands up in court. So again, focusing on health and safety is a much easier way to start to move forward with those abatement issues and receivership issues. And again, if people are interested in assisting us, obviously there's kind of two main ones is we're putting together that code enforcement grant. So if people would like to assist us with that, if you're a good grant writer and can write narratives, that's always appreciated. And the other thing too is again, you know, we do spend time on animal, you know, abatement and animal issues and, excuse me, abatement's not the right word, but animal issues. And so that's something we're in dire need of grants to provide better and safer kennel systems, better and safer services there. And so please contact our city if you would like to assist us with the animal assistance as well. So this is just a report. So I'm going to move us into item 11B, which is the NorCal Continuum of Care Appointment. Would you like me to do this one or?
Sure, go ahead.
So in our pre-agenda meeting, Councilmember Deutsch and I had brought up that we do not have a representative on the NorCal Continuum of Care Group. And for some history on that, it's a consortium of individuals and organizations that are centered on mental health and as well as curing homelessness and housing issues and service systems. And if you were here with us last year, we had dedicated our portion of PLHA funds, which are funds specific to mental health and housing the homeless. We had dedicated those to Siskiyou County, who runs the Continuum of Care. And so I had brought up to Councilmember Deutsch that it might be a good idea to have a representative on that board if we're going to be funneling some of our public monies through them to provide housing for the homeless and address those mental health issues. So I just brought it here for the consideration of the council and then wanted to appoint a council member to this committee. I had actually preliminarily asked Councilmember Deutsch if he would like to sit on the consortium. It typically is in the afternoons during a workday, which can be very difficult for some of us to be able to attend that. And he has a lot, has been gracious with his time. And so I'm hoping he's still interested in serving in place of, for Dunsmere's representation. So I'll open this up for questions and then public comment.
Can I make a statement about it first? Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the chance to do this, assuming we get approval. This really does kind of fit into my overall lifestyle in the sense that I'm also on the board of the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, which obviously deals with mental health and deals with homelessness. So it's something that I'm passionate about. And if selected, I'll be glad to serve. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right. We'll open this for public comment. Would anyone like to make a public comment on the NorCal Continuum of Care Appointment? Seeing none? Allison, are you going to be coming up for?
I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. It's okay. All right. We'll close public comment on this item and move into discussion. Is there any discussion?
I think it's wonderful that we'll be represented on this organization. Thank you so much for volunteering.
I see your sister a lot on that one.
I think so. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, if we're open to it, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Deutsch to represent the city of Dunsmere on the NorCal Continuum of Care.
I'll second.
All right. I'll give it to Councilmember Claire now for the minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you, Council. I'll do my best.
Yeah, I think you'll really like them. I've been to only one meeting.
It's a great group.
Yeah. All right. We'll move now into our final new business item, which is item 11C, which is a request for emergency funding to temporarily relocate the Public Works Building. And I'll open this to City Manager Reeve.
Yep. So in March of last year, I believe we were given notice that we were going to have to move out of our Public Works Building. And we are now coming to the end of that timeline. And in conversations and discussions with Union Pacific and, and there was a, an agreement that they would provide for a secondary or a temporary location with some potential facilities if we needed them. I, in the beginning of January, I felt like we were at a position where I needed to request those from Union Pacific. And subsequently, they have had additional work that they have had to add to their project in a pretty substantial amount. And our portion of that to accommodate our needs has been essentially cut. And so we are now in the last, they notified me this on the 6th of February, and they're expecting us to be out on the 28th of February. So I have already put in motion kind of our temporary plan. And a part of that plan includes, would be to move our facility, our, and secure our, our equipment and everything to a location behind the Lions Building. There, we're going to add in some Conexes, just a number of things we need to just accommodate, you know, like, you know, we've had that building since 1962. So there's all the shelving is like, it's wood and it's built into the walls and it's like, it's not movable, right? And so we still have to accommodate everything down there for a temporary situation, but we have to do it up there out of Conex containers. And so we have also, fortunately, we have a staff member that is a certified tree faller and climber. And so we are working internally with staff. As I mentioned at the beginning, we are, I've reallocated pretty much every possible resource we can to making this happen in the next less than two weeks now. And so we have already begun taking down a number of unhealthy and dangerous trees and then, and removing a couple that are just in the way. But we're trying to maintain the, the health of what's there because hopefully the longer term goal and as Mayor Brian and I have been looking at, you know, we've unfortunately came into another hiccup related to our conversation about the, about the property. And that's related to the, the cost.
Mr. Hicks, you're unmuted.
And that's related to the cost of this, of the other site that we were looking at. And so that, that cost came in at 2.4 million, which is a million above where we were, when we were back over at the park. So we're kind of refocusing our efforts over there in a, in a more long-term fashion, but also a temporary fashion as well. And so we're trying to accommodate two things. We need a temporary facility to, to secure all of our equipment and tools and all of that stuff. And then we also have to try and figure out how to make a long-term solution in the same general location, right? And so we have, we, I've already, we have rented equipment. They've been on site for two days cutting trees. And we will be on site until we complete those actions and, and taking care of what we need to take care of to get the site prepped. And then we have our Conex containers being delivered next week. So I've kind of had to take some emergency actions in order to get to this point. And so therefore, as a part of this request, I'm asking for $50,000 in authorization of funds to, to help assist in that move and, and trying to, that's kind of the hiccup, you know, we, we're planning on spending money on a piece of land over here. And basically now I have to spend money just to accommodate the temporary component. A lot of, you know, so the only stuff that we're really losing out on, and I would say from overall standpoint so far, we're budgeting somewhere in that 30 to 40,000 range. The fencing component has turned into a real hiccup. They're, they're wanting like, what, 3,000 a month or something like that? And we're expecting about eight months. So we're, that would be like 30,000 for fencing, just to temporarily enclose the whole thing. And so we're kind of trying to look at different solutions for that. So that's been kind of a challenge. We have the tree thing, we should have pretty much handled and under control by middle of next week. And then we'll locate our Conexes and our, the move. So we're probably, we're probably going to end up having to work next Saturday. But we're going to start pulling a few longer days next week with the holiday and stuff where, and everything going on, there's a lot of people that have some scheduled time. And so we're, we're going to kind of slow down a little bit before the weekend, move everything that we have cut. We are providing, we're putting the wood out in the parking lot so it's accessible and the public can come and take it. And hopefully we don't have to haul it anywhere because it's, there's a lot of it. I think we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 trees and some of those are in excess of 100 feet tall. And so we are, you know, they're big. I think the oak tree they cut down today was, you know, maybe three foot across. And so there, it's not small lumber by any means. So I'm trying to think, I think I forgot something.
So is this going to blow a huge hole in our budget?
No, not necessarily. So that was, that was what I wanted to touch on. So, so a lot of the stuff that we're, that we're looking to spend money on. So, so I spent money on rental equipment. So I rented a skid steer and, and, you know, a man lift or a high, a high lift that goes up to 80, 80 feet high. And basically by being able to cut the trees in-house, right, right now, I would estimate each of the trees that we were taking down in the, somewhere in that $10,000 range. And so we have already far exceeded, we have four or five, five down already. I mean, so that's 50,000 and it literally just costs us some, some staff time and, and the rental of that equipment. So our big savings is those trees were, you know, from a risk management standpoint, those trees needed to come down anyway because they were unhealthy. One of them, we had a widow maker that was in excess of 10 inches that was hanging. And so it was an unsafe area of, of the parklands already. And so all of the trees that we're taking out, except for, I think maybe two, are, are to the point where they're unhealthy enough that they need to come down anyway. So we're not really, there's not really a negative impact. Actually, I think what we'll see is the trees that are left and the remaining firs and cedars, they're going to kind of take off because they're not being, you know, encroached on by these, these others that are not as healthy. And so like the, like the shelving, we're going to buy shelving and toolboxes and all of that type of stuff. When we build a new facility, we can take all of that out and put it in the new facility. So it's, it's not money wasted. It's just money we're having to spend in advance before we borrow any money to build the building. And so, you know, I'm kind of, we're kind of working that line, but we're also working on, we're, we're pushing, you know, the line of, okay, what is it going to cost us to? So we're, we're getting some, some quoting. So we understand what's this building going to cost us? And then, and then Blake and I are also working on the funding side and we'll hopefully be able to bring some of that back. I would probably say closer to the end of March, probably either the second meeting in March or first one of April.
I assume this would be a.
I assume this would be a key item on the first finance committee coming up, I assume, right?
Yeah. And that, that's what really, we don't really know the full scope of everything, right? Where that's what we're trying to figure out is what, where's the money coming from? And, and what's, what's reasonable, what's not reasonable? So we are engaging local contractors that do steel buildings and, and getting some input on, okay, well, here's, here's where we want to put it, here's how big we need it and what's it going to cost?
I think the nice thing is if you take a look at the staff report is that we are able to kind of spread the funds over some of our enterprise accounts because it is going to be going towards water sewer functions. And so that'll help absorb some of the issues that we have there. And my understanding is water is doing quite well. Sewer, okay. And so I think that'll help with part of the cost as well. Is that we, it's not just coming out of the general fund revenues.
And one of the other ones I didn't note on here, but will be addressed when we go through 218 process for solid waste is that now there, I need to look into it, but I was given some information that we can place all of our street sweeper and all of that type of activity within the solid waste fund in order to fund that. So that's a, that's something we weren't able to do before.
Yeah, it was a major issue, as Mr. Kenny can attest to before. Dunsborough, I believe, was the subject of a lawsuit regarding that practice.
Right.
So I maybe researched that one.
Well, the other one.
And that just recently came out. It was a ruling.
Yeah, they've, they've made some changes on the legislative side to actually allow that now and consider it because of the Senate Bill 1383, the composting law, has now shifted woody material and green waste material. Good night.
Thank you.
Has shifted, actually, Senate Bill 1383 is going to be a huge cost to the citizens of Dunsborough when that takes effect in 2026. But what that in a sense has done is has, it has legitimized leaf material, wood material, green waste material and composting as a solid waste function. And so that's the fun thing about legislation is that it overturns previous case law.
And Prop 218, you know, has an exemption for, not an exemption, but different requirements of water, sewer and garbage and solid waste stuff. This, the definition of garbage is, of course, it changed and blew this also.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent news. Thank you.
And, and so essentially of this 50,000 I'm requesting, we're, I mean, we're, we've been squeezing, squeezing the budget, being exceptionally creative to try and figure out a temporary solution. But I will say that the work they've done in the last day with the, I don't know, $6,000 I spent for the rental equipment and, and another 1,200 for a chainsaw has far exceeded the 50,000 that I'm asking for. And, and so, and that will continue and through this process of at least a temporary solution. And, and we'll bring back a more permanent, the, the permanent solution, hopefully, you know, either the second meeting in March, which is not very far away in the scheme of it because most of our focus has to be, let's just get out of the building and then we'll figure it out after that. But it, we're still moving forward on the other aspect too. So I, I would say my goal is not to fully spend the 50,000, but I, I just need some wiggle room just in case. Right now, I, I think we're probably in the 35,000 to 40,000 range on costs. The Conexes alone were $9,200. And then, you know, so that, that part, we had to start in motion. And, and so there's just a number of things. And, and those Conexes don't go away, right? We can use them for other things afterwards. And we already have some of those intentions in place on how we would use those differently.
Have you got some kind of a diagram that shows kind of what it's going to look like, layout there?
From a temporary standpoint, no. That, that one is a kind of fluid. Yeah, we're, we're in, you know, we knocked down a couple more trees today and we're like, oh, well, what if we, you know? So I don't, we haven't totally nailed that down, but I would have that next week. So I can probably provide an update on the March 2nd meeting.
So again, to kind of circle back to the item because we are getting late tonight that there is a request for the additional funds. So I'm just going to ask, because it will come back to us, that we keep questions to the emergency request. Councilmember Claire, now, do you have any questions before I move into public comment?
Just one quick one. And that's, what are we planning to do? I know that's, that's one of the most visible places of our city from the freeway. And then anyone who's coming in from, into the botanical gardens. What are we doing in terms of aesthetics? I know in the short term, we need to do what we need to do. What's the plan on making sure it's, we put our best foot forward as a town from an aesthetics point of view?
Right. And so that's, that is, you know, from a temporary standpoint, I, I don't have a good solution for it not being fairly ugly, right? I'm going to get the Conex containers I need to get. But from a longer term solution, we're planning that site layout fairly carefully in order to make sure, you know, like some of the aesthetics, we, you know, we like the wrought iron gate that's there by the, by the train. And how do we, you know, like that would be our front gate and it would be an automated front gate. So we wouldn't have to, because the access there is really quick in and out. And from a security standpoint, we felt like we needed to have that. And so those are some of the discussions we're having. How do we make sure, you know, right now, we're, we're looking to potentially back it up to the swimming pool and kind of, and we're going to have to work through this, some situations with the Parks and Rec District. So we, our, one, our back wall would face the swimming pool. And then it would, we would leave some space there that would kind of augment the pool, allow them to have like a grassy space behind there. And then potentially put a mural on the backside of the building. So there's a lot of that stuff that we're very, you know, we're consciously thinking of as we, as we move through the process. But, you know, those are all just ideas right now. And when we bring those, you know, as a part of the permanent solution, then we can correct some of our temporary stuff as well. Like, you know, we were looking at fencing and we're expecting, you know, just temporary fencing was 27,000. Well, we know for a fact that we could put in permanent fencing for substantially less than that. It's only 400 and like 50 feet or something like that. So, you know, I put a, I put 1,000 linear feet of fence in and it only cost me 14,000 when I was in Minnesota. So I, I completely understand that, that that's not realistic. And so we're trying to come up with, the interim isn't going to be as pretty as the long term, but we're definitely very conscious of how the long term works.
Okay. I'm going to open this up for public comment now. If anyone would like to make a public comment, again, you can raise your hand on Zoom or anybody in, gentlemen? All right. Thank you. I'll close that and move into discussion. I'll start with Councilmember Brian.
Been in pretty close contact, being on the Public Works Committee or Building Committee. I just want to correct, there's an extra zero on this. It's not 50,000, it's 50,000?
I noticed that too.
Thank you.
I would move, we authorize up to $50,000 in spending for this Public Works Building emergency. But I'd like to see some accounting of.
Absolutely.
What the numbers are, if it's higher, you know, you know, so be it. But we authorize up to 30 or 50. At some point, we can be, try to reassess, okay, what did this really cost us?
Right. No, we actually, we established a separate GL code specifically for Public Works Site Relocation and the Public Works Permanent Project itself. So, so those will be tracked. So we know what we're going to, know what we're spending equipment wise and, and costs. But that, that stuff is, is being tracked. And so we'll be able to report on that.
Finance may will see the breakdown of general fund, water fund, et cetera, once we.
Yes.
Have accurate data on that.
Correct.
I'll second that.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Councilmember Claire, now, do you have any other discussion on the motion at hand?
Yeah, just that we need to do what we need to do. So, no.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, we'll move into a roll call vote. Councilmember Claire, now.
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
And myself as an aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then again, that will come back to our second meeting in March if people are interested in coming back for the long-term discussion. Obviously, we brought up some aesthetic issues, some space management, security, things like that. So that will be much more in-depth at our next meeting.
And I, and I will have, there's some community relation stuff that we're going to have to work through with Park and Rec's district and also with the Rotary and a number of other things that we, when we have a more established plan, they, that discussion has been started yet, but we, you know, I just asked them to start evaluating, but we're not, you know, I'm not kicking them out tomorrow. We got a couple of months before that all, all take place. So we're working through that as well from a, you know, from a partnership standpoint. And then, you know, the community standpoint, I want to make sure we get that opportunity for feedback as well.
We appreciate that. So move us into item number 12, which is future agenda items. Does any, we will be bringing back the city council protocols. Hopefully we will have an economic development workshop in March. And then obviously the long-term plan for the Public Works Building. But do we have any other future agenda items?
I do, just because we've been very distracted with some of the pressing needs of the hour. I would like in the next phase of our city to work on the annexation project. I don't think it's reasonable to bring it up till we're in the next fiscal year. But when we do our budget, I'd like to include that as a long-term goal and set aside what, what time we can to get that going.
When is our short-term rental year up?
April.
April.
April. In April, I'd like to have that.
Yeah. Could we request that it be heard at the Planning Commission level prior to coming to us as well to, to give them an update on the short-term rental ordinance and then review for any potential changes?
Can we specifically ask them to consider the idea of a cap?
Yeah.
So I would like to have them consider the idea of a cap.
I don't think that's appropriate till we review it.
Well, they are a recommending body on planning and zoning.
Meaning they could certainly consider it, but I don't know. I think it's more just review any changes without our input.
Correct. Yes.
So we're not influencing?
Um, you know, I, I think it is appropriate to just say it's considering a cap because they could say no. They could say no, we don't agree with that.
If there's, if there's issues.
There can be direction.
City Council wants a planning commission to take a look at. You can tell them that.
Well, I'm saying city council hasn't considered it yet. So city council has not said they want them.
Oh, as a, as a whole, as a discussion, I see what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Bring it to the council.
I think it needs to be part of the conversation, but I know they'll, they'll get to that in there.
Okay. So if we bring it to the council and then we could say we want to pass something as a council on the planning.
Right. As, as a whole recommendation. Yes.
That's fine.
Okay. I will, I will bring it to council first and then we'll refer it back. How about that?
Exactly. Makes sense. Thank you. Matthew?
I think, could you, could you list the item on the agenda as a charge discussion? Because I don't want to necessarily have the city council get into a full ordinance discussion prior to getting that recommendation.
Okay.
Any other future agenda items? Councilmember Claire, now?
Not at the current time.
Okay, great. And you know, you can always email myself and the city manager if you have anything in the interim. So tonight, we do have a closed session. So we will be asking everybody to leave. But before you leave, you do have an opportunity to comment on it if you would like. We will be discussing anticipated litigation around one case. And that is all we will share with you at this time. If you'd like to make a public comment on potential litigation, please raise your hand on Zoom or you can go up to the podium and have your three minutes to comment.
You're only asked because the Brown Act says you must be asked.
Oh, I know. I'm Brown Act friend.
Yep.
Bye, Lynn.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, we'll move into a roll call vote.